Good morning. I'd like to call to order the March 30th special meeting of the Groton Town Council Committee of the Whole. Role call. Councillors Zepari, Schmidt, Atwater, Granatowski, Heath, Franco and Parker are present. Councillor Baumgartner is absent and Councillor Obrey had travel difficulties and she cannot make it back today as she had planned. So we are at seven councillors. New business. It's exciting times. 2019 FYE, 2020 proposed budget deliberations. So we have a budget review calendar. First of all, let me apologize in advance. I have a cough drop in my mouth so I apologize for sounding strange and sniffling at you. We have a budget schedule, budget review calendar that is tentative and we're going to try to progress through that calendar as best we can. And so we have various town functions today. We'll begin on page 60 with Legislative Policy which is account 1001. Councillor Parker?
I move the number 49,400.
Second. Moved by Parker and seconded by Schmidt. And I believe this is one of the managers' accounts so he will address this. So we will be moving the number that is the total appropriation for personnel and operating and accounts that have both personnel and operating. So Councillor Parker moved the total which is 49,400. So each new account we will go to, we will move that as the starting point and then if people have amendments to make, you can make an amendment after that. We can have the original motion and two amendments on the floor. You would vote the second amendment first. If that fails, first amendment, if that fails, you're back to the original motion. Hi.
Hi. Good morning.
Good morning.
This is the town council budget, so you know, by far the most important one.
Contains our pay, right?
Yeah. Yes. We'll go by, I'm on page 60 looking at cost centers. We'll start at cost center zero. I think it's a good way to go through on this budget. The vast, almost all of that, you see 33,900 in there, almost about 30,500 of that is just for our CCM dues, our Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. So almost all of that's just for dues. The rest is mostly for postage and advertising. So that's a pretty simple cost center. There's not much to it. RTM, we keep $250 in there for postage, advertising. Though I'm not sure we've used that in years. That's something that probably could be removed. Once in a while, so I guess $250 is pretty minimal to keep in there. Let's see, Jabes Smith House, $3,150. Only a $25 difference from the current. That's for, it's mostly for postage and fuel oil for Jabes Smith House. There's not a lot in there. The Veterans Military, that's for the flags, $2,100 for the flags, flowers type thing. Initiatives, $10,000. That is the Thames River Water Taxi that we put in, donate money for each year. And that's really it to this budget. It's a pretty small budget. The overall budget had decreased from 57 to 40 this year, down to 49,400 for 2020. And that's mostly because this current budget had money in there for the charter revision process still. So we had some last bills for that. So now that that's wrapped up, that's why the budget's dropped.
Thank you. Councillors have questions for Mr. Burke? Councillor Atwater?
Have we paid our CCM dues?
I'd have to check. I assume so by this point. I can't say for certain.
It's showing on--
Oh yeah, we have, yes.
It's showing on a report of March 22nd, there seems to be about $40,000 still in the account that hasn't been expended. If I'm reading it correctly and I'm wondering--
That would have to mean it's not reflecting a CCM payment.
I'll have to look at it. It should have been paid at the beginning of this year.
But we'll make sure it gets paid otherwise.
Any other councillors have questions for Mr. Burke? Seeing none, we will vote on Legislative Policy 1001. All those in favor of 49,400 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. So moved unanimously and we are at seven. Next account is voter registration, 1003 on page 63 please. And I believe that the registrars are here with us today. Councillor Franco, please.
Make a motion for $173,679 for voter registration.
Can you check the number, please?
$176,679.
Thank you.
I say move.
Second. Moved by Franco, seconded by Parker. He said 173. Sorry. It's okay. We're good. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Kristin Venditti. I am the Republican Registrar of Voters and--
I'm Paul Duarte and I'm the Democratic Registrar of Voters.
What would you like to tell us about your account?
Ready? Okay, so this year, in this budget season, we are preparing for your local municipal election in the fall and also the presidential primary which will be on April 28th in 2020. So the numbers change from year to year based on what we have for elections because each election costs a different amount based on the number of people we project that we need to have at polling places. The state mandates what we're supposed to do each year for those elections and if we, as you saw in the paper, there's some towns that are being investigated because they did not put enough people on to work their elections. So we try to plan ahead as best we can. So essentially in the spring, the presidential primary is going to cost more than the fall municipal election just based on the number of people that will be attending or voting. The other parts of our budget, we do have one full-time employee, part-time employee, sorry, as you are aware. The rest of everything that we do is state mandated. All the letters that we send out, all the notifications, anything that we have to do is state mandated. Anything you want to add?
Nope, I think you covered it.
Do any of the councillors have questions for the registrars? So just for clarification for the public, the referendum on May 6th is going to be taken from the current year's budget.
Yes.
And where will that money come from, Mr. Burke?
Contingency.
So we'll be moving approximately 20,000 from contingency to cover the May 6th primary?
And the November 11th.
Because we didn't budget for the November, December.
December.
We didn't budget for the December 11th referendum as well.
The one that has passed.
The one that has passed.
Mr. Burke?
Just, we're just about ready to introduce the fourth quarter transfers. So you'll see that and other things coming up soon.
Any questions? Councillor Zepari?
Could you tell us a little bit about how the money is spent for each of the elections? We have facilities, we have machinery, we have volunteer personnel. Where's the money go?
Okay, the personnel are not volunteer, they are paid. We do have the machinery but we have to get the memory cards that are put into the machines reprogrammed every year. We have the HAVA systems called IVS machines. Those we don't have to pay for but we also have to program those. So a little bit of money goes towards that. We have to purchase the ballots. That includes the absentee ballots and the regular ballots at the polling places. We have to mail out letters to all the people that are working. Am I missing anything? Okay, training, but training doesn't cost us extra in the budget. But we are state mandated to train all the employees, but that's included in their set fee to work.
You have an additional personnel expense for people who are working at the polls, at each of the polls?
Yes. Yep, they're considered temporary or seasonal employees so we only employ them for the day, plus their training. And they get paid a lump sum, you know, just for the day. They come in at 5:15 in the morning and they leave around 9:00 approximately.
I'm always amazed at the number of volunteers that we have coming, donating their time to the town for various services. Have you considered using volunteers for those positions?
We would absolutely love to use volunteers for those positions. However, we have difficulty even getting enough people to work when we have to pay them. I think it's because it's a 14-hour day and we can split it in half. But we find it very difficult to find people that are willing to work. And I would love, if we could find volunteers, I would absolutely love that because it would save us and the town money.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions for the registrars? Seeing none, we will vote on account 1003, $176,679. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We are on to the towns clerk, count 1005 on page 66. I believe we are at--
Can I just ask, there's scones next to the microphone up there, David. Are those for anybody?
If anybody would like scones, they're there for the taking. There's no nuts, just apricots or lemon ginger.
I hear they're delicious. Councillor Heath, so you are on to 1005, please.
I make a motion for $322,898.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Heath, seconded by Franco. Madam Clerk.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to my budget. Have you had an opportunity to look at comparisons of last year, this year? Because my increase is strictly due to contractual employment contracts. Initiatives that we've done or planning for next year are, every year we do ordinances and codifying ordinances. I have an estimate that I'm concluding for payment for this year. Estimated at $2,100. That comes out of cost center-- Cost center two. Cost center two, Legislative Services.
Madam Clerk, can you pull the microphone closer, please? It's stuck to here. Thank you very much.
Cost center three I use for Legislative Services and that's where that would come from.
Did you want to discuss anything in your revenue, your financing plan or?
Well, that's a constant change. I did bring some data that might help you understand that last year we brought in $1,448,109. And as of January of, excuse me, I'm giving you the data from, okay. Last year was $1,267,267.20. And we're well over $1,200 at this point too. So the estimates that I put in are based on projections that I have no control over. So if a large real estate is conveyed and the conveyance tax is paid, we see a large jump. And we continually see condominiums have been selling. This year we had a large condominium sale. And so that's why you see these fluctuations. So if we had no large sales, we'd just go on our regular real estate sales for conveyance. The rest of the sales are pretty much standard. Your marriage licenses and birth certificates, the recordings are what fluctuate.
Councillor Heath?
Actually, Heath just answered my question.
Councillor Franco?
So I see zero increase in salary adjustments though the regular full-time will be going up. And is that due to all benefits?
No, it's not the benefits. It's the contract that, my workers have a contract that has a 2.5% increase. And so last year, are you comparing from last year or this year?
Well, this year.
Okay. Well, there's no salary adjustment because no one retired that I had to pay out. That's where that would come from. So I don't expect anyone retiring this year.
Are there other questions for the clerk? Seeing none, we will vote on 1005, the amount of $322,898. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are on to account 1006, excuse me, on page 70. And this is Legal Services. And we are at Councillor Atwater.
I move the amount of $297,500 for Legal Services.
Second. Moved by Atwater and seconded by Parker. And we are back to Mr. Burke.
Hello again. My wife just texted. She would like a lemon scone. So I'll bring her one of those. Legal Services, overall the budget went from $319,000 to $297,500 in 2020, so a $2,500 drop. Going by cost center, cost center zero, the town attorney, our main attorney fees. The big thing coming up this year is we're going to have three bargaining unit contracts to negotiate as well as we're looking at, we have separate pension agreements and we're looking at negotiating those at the same time. So it'll be a pretty active year for bargaining this year. Special Attorney, we have $10,000 under that. That's kind of miscellaneous outside attorneys. For instance, we have an attorney that's working with us on our FOIA concerning Balfour Beatty right now. So it's that type of thing. If we wanted to do anything further, we'd have to increase that budget. It's pretty minimal right now. And then General Support, $60,000. That's attorney fees for things like tax foreclosures. A lot of that's reimbursable as we go through the process. So we have to spend it upfront for the attorney to handle the process. Then we get a lot of it back when we tack it on to whatever we do with the properties. It's a pretty small, simple budget. Any questions?
Is the bond counsel included in town attorney or special attorney?
No, that's under, what do we actually pay, out of the school budget? There's a different budget for that, right? Because it doesn't come under our legal fees that separated out.
Great, thank you. Councillor Heath?
Are there items in the attorney fees, like when we ask for attorney's opinions and that kind of thing, are there things in there that are fluctuating based on requests from the town council, the RTM, different departments?
Do they break it out by department? Yeah, I didn't think so.
No, I'm not asking would you break it out by department, but are there fees that we're inadvertently generating?
Sure, anytime a request is made, yes, that's what this is. I request an opinion on something or they're reviewing and yeah, there's a direct cost. We get a monthly statement that breaks it down in broad categories but not like by department. There's, for instance, for the foreclosure type stuff, there's one category and there's some other categories in there.
Councillor Atwater?
John, is the 227.5, is that a retainer or is that just a fund?
As you go. If we don't use them, then we don't pay it.
Because I'm looking at a report through, well, March 22nd or whatever, for this year. And we've only spent about 44% of the funded total and we're two-thirds of the way through the year. So--
Yeah, they're running a little behind on some of their invoicing. We just got the latest yesterday, I believe, or yesterday, the day before. So that's a little bit behind. The people that do that are pretty tied up right now. So they're catching back up. So you'll see that rise some, but this has been a pretty good year overall for opinions and for, I think we closed out the bargaining agreements that we did have pretty early in the year and it didn't drag on too long. So we're having a good year for it. I anticipate it'll be worse for next year.
And then I'm assuming that anything left over in the fund just goes--
Just stays in the general fund. Yeah, no retainer at all.
Councillor Zepari?
During the course of the year, I noticed frequently we have the attorney come to our council meetings. And I see her sit out there for a period of time until we get to the item that we need her for. Would it be possible to arrange our schedules so that we get her on immediately at the beginning of the meeting and get her off and thereby reduce the hourly charge that she's making?
They don't charge us for coming to our meetings. It's something we negotiated in the new agreement that they come to our meetings at no cost. However, I do try to coordinate with them at what point in the meeting it would be, just so we don't waste their time. Sometimes though, she's like, oh, I'm going to come, I'll just come anyways and, you know, do some other work. But we do not get charged for that.
Any further questions on Legal Services? Seeing none, we will vote on account 1006, the amount of $297,500. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. Next is Executive Management on page 73. This is account 1010. Councillor Schmidt, please.
I move the amount of $301,632.
Second. Moved by Schmidt, seconded by Franco. Mr. Burke?
Overall, the budget went from $346,869 in 2019 to drop to $301,832 in 2020. That is because of the retirement and then of the assistant to the town manager not replacing that position. There are some benefit savings too, but that's not reflected in this budget. I'm going to go on page 74 more by operating expense. That makes more sense with this budget. 5201 postage printing, advertising, flat at $10,000. Professional Development going up by $1,200, mostly for increased costs on memberships, that type of thing. And some conference increases. Mileage, flat, $645, mileage reimbursement. Repairs and maintenance, that dropped to $400 because we had a older copier that we were paying maintenance on. We've gone to a new copier with the lease which is reflected down in 5290 for that $2,500 increase to maintain that. So that's why those two changed. Materials and supplies went up by $100 to $2,600. And then I've kept $500 in there for machinery, equipment and furniture for miscellaneous. That's pretty much it. Any questions?
So the postage printing and advertising, those are our nice thick packets that get sent out and--
In various of, yeah.
Do legal ads come from the clerk's office then?
I believe it comes through the clerk's office. She's gone now. Cindy, I think most of those come through out there. I think most of it's postage really for us. We might have some odds and ends things, but most of it comes through them.
Thank you. Are there questions for the manager on Executive Management?
Yeah, I'll answer them.
I don't want to miss anybody, so I don't want to go too fast here. Okay, seeing no questions, we will vote on $301,632. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. Takes us to account 1011, Information Technology on page 78, please.
I move that we appropriate $1,68,215 for Information Technology.
Could you say the number one more time, please? I wasn't ready.
I'm sorry?
Could you repeat the number, please? I wasn't ready. I just want to verify. Thank you, Councillor Zepari.
Second.
Moved by Zepari, seconded by Schmidt. And we have Mr. Hancock here. Would you just introduce yourself and tell everybody what your title is and then tell us about your budget, please?
Brian Hancock, Manager of IT. This budget is, the increases that were in here, they're basically out of my control. One of them is Personnel Services. That went up about $13,000. And the other one is Software Maintenance. We're doing our ERP installation and that was a $40,000, $45,000 software maintenance that we had to cover. We've got to cover both of them at this point in time because we're right in the middle of the conversion process. That'll take a period of time. And the other increase was the new Palo Alto firewall that we installed at the Public Safety Building. It was about an $11,500 increase. And the telecommunications line item, it went down about $30,000 due to the VoIP phone system that's been paid off. The lease has been paid off. So now we're just paying maintenance on it. So Kinda Groton owns our phone system now. So overall, it's a pretty, pretty flat budget from what I can see.
I have some questions. If we're on page 76, the third paragraph town down talks about the Planimetric data set.
Yes.
And it says it's required every 10 years.
Correct.
Who requires that?
Doesn't the state require that?
State of Connecticut requires new data every 10 years.
The flyover?
I'm not sure if it's required by the state. I would have to take on that.
Yeah, it is actually a requirement every 10 years to do a complete flyover aerial.
Okay. Let's see.
And we are actually coordinating with surrounding towns to see if we can get four or five towns like we did the last couple of years, the last couple of flyovers to get a cheaper rate.
That would be great.
Do some savings. I think we had five towns last time we did it at the five year.
Very good. And then the last question is with regard to the webpage redesign committee. How is the progress on that?
The progress is going very well. I sent the RFP up Friday to the purchasing agent to put it out for bid. So hopefully, it'll be out there for about three weeks. Then we'll get them in, reevaluate and we'll move forward with that.
Okay, very good. Mr. Burke?
Just to mention, they've been very tied up with that ERP conversion and Cindy and a lot of the staff as well as Bob have been in training the last few weeks, many days.
Are there other councillors with questions? Councillor Heath?
Just a question on the salary change. It's a 2.7% change from 2019. How are these negotiated?
Most of them are contractual. Actually, they're all contractual.
What does that mean?
They're unionized and non-union.
Right, and so the union ones would be telecommunications, I think was primarily, their IT was Bob and, I think Eileen was still involved in that one, is that right? For negotiating that contract. But typically it's Bob and Eileen negotiating and then they bring it to the council for approval. All of them are going that way.
Councillor Parker?
Two questions. The software maintenance, since everything is going to come to a head, will this start decreasing after a while? Since I know it's an implementation currently, when does it kick in to decrease?
When we can get the, the biggest decrease will happen once we get into, I call it Phase 1B. The second part of it will start in July. It'll probably be a year after that when we get human resource, payroll, fixed assets, all the other major ones in there. And that would drop after all of those have been completed. Penamations maintenance will drop off which is like $62,000 a year. Kronos will drop off which is about $36,000. And the software I recruit, that's an HR software, is about another $9,000. So there is savings in the long run. We're just running parallel right now.
And my second question is how close are you guys becoming CGS compliant?
We do have two more CIPs coming up this year. One of them is for replacing MDTs in the cars because they're still at XP. Been talking with the chief about that. I did budget for five of them. I'm pretty sure we have like nine of them. So in the next couple of years, we will be CEGIS compliant, we'll be working on it, and hopefully, we can get a CEGIS audit done.
One more question, sorry. Does that mean you guys have XP going to 10, or which one are you going to for them?
I think we'll probably be going to 10 because seven's gonna be retired in 2020, 2021, or something like that. It's 2020.
Thank you. Did you say the mobile data terminals are running Windows XP?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, I agree.
Counselors of Perry and then Counselor Schmidt.
I noticed that you have two PC network support ITs, is that right? This is on page 80. How many, how many personnel, I guess they're ICT twos? How many of those, how many people do you have in that category?
Three.
I'm sorry?
Three PC support twos, three.
Okay. So they're being paid about $75,000 a year?
Probably somewhere in that range, 72, 70, 72.
Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Schmidt?
I just wondered how safe our system is from hacking.
We, the mayor has actually been concerned about that, and I did send her an email on that. And we, we do have multiple layers of security on our system right now. The first one being the Palo Alto firewall, which I did a report yesterday. And just last month, we stopped about 340,000 attempts to get into the network. That's just one of our levels. We did the second one at the police department. So when that comes fully online, that will be extra support for at least the police department. We run Mimecast, which is a cloud-based web security. That is another layer. And then we run Webroot that is local to the PCs. That is just another level of security we run out there. We've been lucky so far. We're doing good.
Sounds like you're doing very well. Thank you.
Counselor Franco?
I see that you're going to have everything backed up to a cloud in the next 68 months.
Yes.
Which is absolutely great. This usually comes with a cost, depending on how much you're backing up.
Yeah, they, I did a CIP and they, I do have a PO open for that, so I do have that one covered for right now.
For CIP?
Through an open PO.
Okay.
For the money to cover that.
Do you have any kind of estimate on how much this will be annually?
Uh, not off the bat, not off my head right now, but we're, like we said, we're slowly moving it on. So it'll suddenly, it's not gonna be a giant spike when it comes up. I'm gonna try and smooth budget it out. So it's not like $20,000 a year or something like that.
You said it is, or is it not?
It won't be. It won't be.
It won't be?
No, I will. I will, we're moving things out there as slow as possible right now to see what the financing is out there. So we're not, we don't have sticker shock in the end.
Because I know it's, it's very expensive.
Yeah, it is. And we have to be CEGIS compliant on the cloud, cloud-based backup too, so. Another layer of security we have on it.
Because I'm thinking for a town, it would be quite a large expense. Because I know I work for a small business and they do it, and it's a large expense.
I think we get a little bit of a discount being a local government, so.
Okay.
Not huge, but a little one.
Thank you.
Any other counselors with questions for Mr. Hancock? Seeing none, we will vote account 1011 in the amount of $1,068,215. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Mr. Hancock is with us for the Technology Replacement Fund, which is account 6050. And this is on page 82, please. And I think we are back to Counselor Parker, please.
I move $96,638.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Franco. Mr. Hancock.
This is the ongoing schedule plan that I've developed many years ago. It's been going on for about 10 years now. I have it projected out to like 2025. This is a scheduled replacement of PCs, printers, and laptops. There is a list of what is expected to be replaced this year. You can see the five police MDTs being slated for replacement here. Three laptops, five GIS user PCs. These users are in a special category because they're like power users. They need high-end video cards and memory to run GIS and Autodesk. So they're not sitting there waiting for 10, 15 minutes for a refresh. And the 68 computers. That's pretty much what makes up this budget. There is the 50 monitors, which I do buy and replace as, as they fail. And I did add one line item on here for peripheral replacement. We were talking in the IT steering committee that when a validator breaks or a scanner doesn't work or a UPS battery goes down, cash drawer, and items like that, people don't have the budget for that. And to get them repaired, we actually just take them offline. So I figured I'd throw a line item in here for repair or replacement of these little peripheral items that are attached to PCs throughout the town. And there's quite a few of them. There's a good list of them out there. But that was the only thing I had pretty much to this cross center.
Did you say you added a peripherals line?
Yeah, it's under, well, it's in the, it's in the notes, but it's under cross center four.
So it's under maintenance?
I put it on 5260. Oh, 5260, I'm sorry.
In a different account?
Oh, under, you said 5260.
Oh, repairs and maintenance.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I gotcha. There you go. All right, Counselor Parker had questions, sorry.
Couple of questions. How many computers did we replace last year? And how many are totaled throughout all the departments? Because 68 seems like a lot to be doing at once. I'm just.
Last year, we did 68.
68 and.
This current year, 68.
This current year, so it cost approximately $58,000, or $40 something.
About $42,500, yes.
$43, okay. But we're almost in. Okay. All right.
I've actually seen the spreadsheet of the layout I used.
We don't have that, do we?
No. We can get it to you though.
I can get it to you if you're.
I think Counselor Parker had other questions.
Okay, so. I know the MDTs are gonna cost, like, three laptops, the five GIS users, and. Is there any way we can break it down a little bit? Are these 68 computers?
Yeah, I can break that down.
And critical?
Yeah, it's, it's nice to stay on a schedule because as they get to be five years old, five plus, they start breaking down. And it takes more manpower for my department to go out there and fix them. Software gets newer, doesn't run on them. Give you a breakdown. The 68 computers are $42,500. The five GIS user PCs are $62,500. The 50 monitors is $5,000, and that's replaced as needed.
Wait, but that was three laptops or?
No, that was 50 monitors.
Oh, because that's not listed on.
That was, yeah, replaced as needed when they break.
Oh, I see it afterwards.
Two laptops, $2,400. One ruggedized laptop for the highway garage is $3,500. Five police MDT replacements, $20,000. One check validator for the tax office, $500. And four laser replacement printers, $3,600.
Mr. Burke?
Just to mention, I think it's critical to stay on the schedule. My computer's only about two years old, and as we've got new software, it's already running really slow. We have to keep those turning over because we're, especially with these upgrades that are coming. We don't, for productivity-wise, it's well worth the money spent.
Counselor Heed? Oh, I thought you had a question. Counselor Franco?
So if we're planning for all these, the upgrades and bringing in new computers, and within two years, they're lagging. I mean, are these, is that planning ahead? I mean, are we getting the right computers that we need?
They're the latest on the market right now. We get as much memory as we can. My limit is $600 to $625 per unit. Some people, like Tom Mange, does use it extensively and keeps some stuff open. We just might have to upgrade his memory on him and get him going.
Thank you.
How many MDTs are out there that still need to be replaced? If we're doing five this year and the rest are running on XP, where are we with that?
I think it's 10. I was talking to the chief about that. I was, it's either 10 or nine that we have out there.
After these five are replaced, there'll still be 10 remaining?
No, when we replace these, there'll either be four or five left.
Okay. Thank you. I thought I saw you raise your hand.
Yeah, she was supposed to.
Counselor Heed?
The computer equipment, I know you're going through this, but the computer equipment lines 5410 is up 63% to the adjusted 2019, sorry, and 76% to the estimate for fiscal year 2019. So that's $36,000. Is that all critical?
That's the stuff I just named off. It's just the equipment. I think most of it's critical. The, everything, like I say, everything's on that schedule. And like the Tom Manager said, things do crank to a halt. I know the ruggedized MDT that goes out in the field with the highway garage is starting to malfunction right now. So when they go out and they're trying to take points of signs and guardrails and poles and sewer covers and grates, they have to bring it down to us extensively to get things working again for them. So it's really hindering. So replacement of the equipment is pretty critical, I think.
Mr. Burke?
Yeah, $20,000 of that alone is just for those five MDTs. Yeah, that's a huge chunk of it.
Are there other questions for Mr. Hancock on 1011? Oh, I'm sorry, on 6050. Okay, seeing none, we will vote on account 6050, the amount of $96,638. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock.
All right, thank you.
All right, so this takes us to regional agencies. And I think. Give me one second to take a look at things, please, before you move a number. This will be on page 177, account 1007. And I think we're gonna take a five-minute recess, please, at this point. So we're gonna recess at 9:48 for five minutes. Thank you. Thank you. We are back at 9:55. And we are going to go to account 1076 right now, which is on page 205. And this is debt service. And the number is actually on page 207. And where did we leave off?
Make a motion for $6,638,769.
Moved by Franco, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Parker. So Finance Director Landry is here.
Good morning. The debt service increase this year is primarily related to the increase for the school project. We plan to have a bond sale next month, and the first principal and interest payment will be paid in fiscal 2021. Otherwise, it's the payment for this dysfunction covers prior bond issues from several, several years ago.
Thank you. Counselor Heed?
So this is the highest year for the school bond issue payment, is that right?
Based on projections, right. We don't have really any idea what could happen to interest rates. But for the projection for next year, yes. And we will know after the sale in April whether the projections we've used, maybe it can go up, maybe it could go down a little bit for next year. But until we actually issue those bonds, we won't know that firm cost. This is just an estimate, the 1.7 million.
And just a follow-on question. We were of the minds that we may need to go out for another bond for road construction, road maintenance. Are we like in the right range where if we needed to do that, we could do that?
Well, and we'd have to have a referendum to pass that because the bond, the road maybe, the road paving is complete at this point. So we'd have to have a new referendum authorizing, a new bond authorization before we can move forward with that.
All right, and one correction, I said we, I meant I was of the mind that we would probably have to do that, so.
On page 209, I believe, is where it talks about the statutory debt limits and where we are as a town as far as what is legally allowed and what the town policy is. Did you just want to speak to that briefly?
Okay, yes. The state policy would allow us to have a debt that far exceeds what the town would ever be comfortable with. So the town has created its own internal debt policy. And on page 209 just gives you the difference between, you know, what the state would authorize and what we're, our debt currently is at. And this is as of June of 2018. The debt limit is always as of June 30th of the prior fiscal year.
Counselor Atwater?
I'm looking again at money spent so far this year. We spent a little over $3 million. And there's still another $2 million remaining in the account. Is that, I assume these are fixed costs and that will be spent in the next three months?
Exactly. It depends on when the debt is issued, when the payments do. I believe, I don't have the actual debt schedule monthly payments, but I believe we have payments due in April that will probably take up the difference of that.
Did you have further questions, Counselor Atwater? Are there any other questions for Ms. Landry regarding account 1076? Seeing none, we will vote on account 1076 in the amount of $6,638,769. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. And we are on, are you staying for contingency, or is that Mr. Burke? Okay, very good. So we're gonna move to contingency, which is account 1074. And this is on page 212, please.
I'll make a motion for $350,000 for contingency.
Second. Moved by Heed and seconded by Parker. You could probably just stay there. You might as well be comfortable.
This year, we had, in 2019, we had budgeted $450,000. We're proposing $350,000 for next year. However, we, as I mentioned earlier, I want to be fairly conservative with that. You never know what's gonna come up. And we have three, like I said, union bargaining agreements that we'll be negotiating, as well as those other pension agreements. So that's something new. So I wouldn't want to change this by too much. I'm pretty comfortable with this number.
Are there questions for Mr. Burke, Mr., or Counselor Atwater? I apologize.
I'm showing, again, on my summary through March 22nd, John, that the actual amount budgeted for last year was $375,207. And it's showing that there's been nothing spent, that there's still $375,000 in the account.
The way that works with, you start moving out until their budget, so you don't really see where you started with. We started with $450,000. We have moved money out.
Okay, but it doesn't seem as though we spent that much money to.
No, like I said, we, I mentioned earlier, we had finished up. We, we didn't do too much this year on contract negotiations. It wrapped up pretty easily. We didn't run into anything. We didn't have any weather issues. We, we just have had a great year on contingency. We just have had a great year on contingency. And so every year's different, you never know from year to year. But, you know, we will have more costs potentially with the contracts this year.
I'm just a little concerned that if you have money in your wallet, you tend to spend it. And I'm wondering if $350 is really necessary as a contingency.
In some years, we do use all of it. Projects come up, other things come up. It's really very different from the other. Because if you don't budget enough, then you'll have to go for a supplementary adjustment. I mean, it can be tweaked a little bit, but I think that's, you know, to be safe, we want to be close to this.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Heed?
If we don't spend the money, it goes back into the general fund, right? So if we were to, say, not have a contingency or have a lower number, and how do you get money out of the contingency? And then how do you get it versus how do you get it out of the general fund?
Well, you do a supplementary appropriation. It's not a lot different, honestly, as far as I know than doing a budget. It would go through the typical process of get approval here, go to the RTM to be approved, and you move money out of fund balance.
As far as timeliness of addressing emergency appropriations, is it easier to move money from contingency than a supplementary appropriation?
I prefer contingency because then it's accounted for, it's already, you know, you've collected the taxes for it. It doesn't eat into your fund balance. And then if you do well, it goes into your fund balance. You keep that in consideration until lower taxes potentially later. I just think fiscally, fiscal management-wise, it's better to have it in contingency.
And I'm thinking political process-wise. If it's a supplementary appropriation, it has to come through us and then also through RTM, correct?
Correct.
So it's going to slow the process if you have a broken boiler or something, correct?
Well, even with contingency, if it's $10,000 or over, it still goes through RTM, it's still transferred. So it goes through the process. I just think for tracking purposes, it's better to do contingency.
So it's an accounting purpose thing, then?
And the year before, what was our contingency the year before? It was much, much higher. There are years that we use a huge amount of contingency. So you want to keep it, you don't want to get much under this.
All right, on page 211, 2016 it was $550,000, 2017 $425,000, 2018 $650,000, last year $450,000. So this is coming in well below what we've had in the past couple of years. Any other questions? Counselors of Perry?
Am I correct that in each of the last two years, you've taken nothing out of the contingency fund?
That's not, no. What happens is contingency is not like a regular budget. As you spend it, you move it into another budget and it just looks, if you spend it all, it just looks, it doesn't track what you started with. Contingency is just a different animal than other budgets. Cindy could probably explain that.
When you have the contingency line item and you need to transfer to other functions, you're not increasing the bottom line of your budget. You've already appropriated that. If you had no contingency and you took it out of fund balance, you would be increasing the bottom line of your budget. It is easier to take it out of contingency. It is a little bit confusing, but you're not allowed to actually charge something to the contingency. We budget the $450,000. And the reason, I think you said $375,000 is what we have left, is because we've taken it out of contingency and we've moved it to another department. So that's why you don't ever see anything expended there. You just see the original appropriation as being reduced and we're moving it elsewhere.
Well, then how much have we moved to other departments from the contingency fund?
I think it's about $75,000. We had some, we had to move money for the Board of Ed to meet MBR, if you recall. We had some wage increases that we did. And there was one other.
And fourth quarter transfers will be coming out of there.
Fourth quarter, right, oh, yes, on page 211, it's $74,793 for wage increases in the Board of Ed to meet MBR.
Wage increases through a union contract we negotiated.
One of the things I'm seeing is that if we, if we put the money in now, we've added to the budget preliminarily by putting in $300,000 into the contingency fund. If we don't put $300,000 into the contingency fund and later we have to make a special appropriation, we've added to the budget. If we add less than $300,000, the taxpayers come out ahead. Because as soon as we put this money into the contingency fund, that money, that contribution to the contingency fund is calculated in determining the mill rate for the taxpayers next year.
That's true, contingency is part of your total expenditure. But if you don't have the contingency and you have to take it out of fund balance, you're really pushing that into the next fiscal year. Because you're reducing the amount of fund balance that's available.
Well, we've been taking it out at a low rate. And we're willing to, if we're willing to make a supplemental contribution to it at a later time when necessary, I'm not sure it's necessary at this point to charge the taxpayers the $300,000. That's the only thing I'm saying.
Well, if you look on page 211 and you'll see from 2014 up, the, what we have taken it for, the various departments. And it was, it could be for wage increases, it could be for an emergency that happened in public works. We've had snow in the past that our budgets have far exceeded, particularly for public works, the purchase of salt. So I can understand what you're saying, it's kind of a catch-22.
Well, if we do need it, we can always make the extra appropriations. That's why we, actually, the fund balance is a contingency fund. When we have, we've determined that we want a 15% excess in our fund, we have that, that is a contingency. Now we have an additional contingency. I would like to see us cut this down.
Mr. Burt wanted to speak.
I just blanked. I just had a brain fart. We've regularly spent the full amount or close to the full amount many years. We have some significant contracts up this year as well as some new ones with the pension. We will spend likely a huge chunk of that money. And if any other emergencies come up, we'll spend all the money. I would not turn this down. We're really using 1.5 million in fund balance this year. You know, I would not want to hit the fund balance for more if something else came up. You have to account for it. Otherwise, I would definitely not endorse the 1.5 million this year for fund balance. So you take one hand, you know, rob one hand for the other. Rob Peter to pay Paul, that's what I'm looking for.
Are there accounting standards? I'm not an accountant, but I mean, generally accepted accounting principles. Is it more expected that you would have a contingency fund and use that?
Everybody has a contingency fund, every municipality.
And the charter specifically speaks of a contingency fund when it talks about transfers, supplemental appropriations and contingency.
Okay, Counselor Baumgartner has arrived. So we have Baumgartner, Franco, and Heed.
For transfers above $10,000, I know it has to go through the RTM for approval.
Above the council?
Yes. Is there any example where an appropriation of more than $10,000 would not go through the RTM?
No. Rules require it in the charter.
And that's for any appropriation?
For any town function. That is not, that Board of Ed is a different animal, for any of our stuff.
And for most contingency funds, I know, well, at least for ours, it specifies that not more than 2.0% of the general fund operating budget must be maintained. Or is it typically 2% for, say, some of our surrounding municipalities for the operating budget? Or do they look at kind of the combined budget of, say, the Board of Ed?
I can't speak to our neighboring, I don't know if Cindy knows any better what they, that's why. Because we don't base it on a certain percent, we look at what we were sure that things were going to send that year.
We use 2% of the operating budget. And I wasn't sure if the, say, other municipalities in the surrounding area utilize combined budgets for the Board of Ed and.
We're determining that. Well, we use it based on the general fund, which includes the Board of Ed. Our debt policy has that. It's general fund budget as a total.
Okay.
And when you look at last year, we spent $785,000 out of contingency. $350,000 is a very reasonable number. And you're going to have a year where you have a better year. But you're going to have years, definitely where you have worse years. And we really try to think about what the likely, I don't want to collect money we don't need either. I think this is a fair number. So $100,000 down from this year because we're having a good year. But I do see some potential for next year.
Counselor Franco and then Heed?
Well, historically, from what I'm seeing, prior to 2019, the lowest was $350,000. That was appropriated and spent, and everything was above that. So actually, my concern.
19 is the only year we've had, you know, less than $350,000. And we're not quite that bad.
And my concern was if we have things pop up that are more than $350,000, what are we going to do then? So I wasn't even sure if this was going to be enough. When you look historically at what we had to go to the contingency for.
You know, it's a guessing game. And honestly, I re-lord it because I, you know, I agree with Counselor Zepiary's opinion that you don't want to collect money you don't need. This is money I think we need and, you know, there is some risk. This has just been an unusual year in 19. We've never had another year in recent history that's come in this low.
Counselor Heed and then Parker.
Parker can go first.
Sure. Parker, then Heed.
Well, Cindy, we're going to have to pay for, can you hear me? Okay. Just the two elections we, not elections. This is the one we're going with? Yeah, the elections we had, that will be coming out of contingency, correct? So things like that could pop up. $350,000 is pretty good in my book. Because we're not doing $450,000 or the $650,000 that we did previous years. And it's in our charter, correct, that we have a contingency plan, so.
Just some additional information, fourth quarter transfers, it'll be coming to you shortly. I have about $140,000 of requests for contingency.
Counselor Atwater and then Heed?
With the, I think it's this coming week where you're meeting with the bonding agencies or the credit agencies?
Monday and Tuesday, correct.
Does this kind of figure play in there and they're looking at us as far as a?
Well, they look at fund balance and, you know, generally, and we're at the 15% mark, so I'm not worried about that. As long as we maintain our 15%, then I don't think this comes into play.
Counselor Heed?
So $350,000 was budgeted in 2014. 2015, again, $350,000. $550,000 in 2016. Doesn't say how much we spent. 2017, $425,000 appropriated, spent $414,000. 2018, $650,000 appropriated or budgeted. $785,000 was spent, including wage increases this year. We're going, I've been in $450,000 last year, this year you want to go back to $350,000. With the idea that if you look at 2018, what I'm getting at is you had wage increases at that time. So if we budget $350,000 this year, the wage increases exceed that amount. There are a couple of different ways that we can pay for those wage increases. One of them is not to increase the budget of that, for that department. You can have your wage increase, but you don't get more money for the department.
Well, you have to pay it. I mean, eventually it's going to afford a order transfer, or else you take an audit hit. But you're going to have to pay it per contract.
Well, we would have to pay for individuals, but maybe that's, is there a way, like, if you go through that process and you say, you have five people, you're each getting 3%, 4%, 5%, 6% raise, and I'm just throwing numbers out there. But at that point, maybe we need to look at, do we need to reduce staffing? If it's only $350,000.
And as I've been preaching, we're not reducing staffing at this point. Not without thorough review and analysis to cut services. We're at the point where I can't cut. As it is, public works, I think, is underfunded. And that's, you know, one of the ones we can make the biggest difference in. You know, just like painting the front, you know, the front of the building. People make these cuts, you know, and then expect the same level of service. We can't do it anymore.
So then is $350,000 enough?
I think it's a safe, you know, if it's more, if it's not, it's going to be very little bit more. I think it's a fairly reasonable number. I would not go under $350,000, though. I would never budget under $350,000. Hey, obviously $450,000 is safer, but I, you know, we've discussed and we feel fairly comfortable with $350,000.
Counselor Schmidt, you're the only one who hasn't spoken. Did you want to add anything?
Well, I just think any financial advisor will tell you with your personal finances that you should have an emergency fund. Because you don't know what might happen if you get sick or somebody else gets sick. You have to be able to have an account that will carry you through those times. I think that is just what we're doing with the $350,000. We're carrying our town through any hard times that may come ahead. I think it's very important to have it.
Everyone has spoken on this, there's anyone else who would like to speak again? Seeing none, we will vote on account 1074 in the amount of $350,000. All those in favor, we are eight counselors now. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Thank you. All right, so we are back to account 1007, regional agencies. And the number is on 177, but you have a breakdown of all the submissions from the agencies in Appendix A, if you're interested in taking a look at that. And I'm not sure where we left off. Are we, Counselor Atwater or Heed?
Atwater.
Atwater. Okay, so 177, please, regional agencies, account 1007.
For the account of regional agencies, 1007, I move the amount of $134,239.
Second.
Moved by Atwater and seconded by Schmidt. And I see we have several people here to speak to this. We have a gentleman in fifth seat, we have Judge Keppel is here as well. So if you'd like to come on up to the table, please. There's only two microphones, but you're welcome to come up and then you could pass the microphone around.
Let's record the show that Patricia and I are coordinating our blue shirt, khaki slacks.
I just so noted Judge's. If you could, I'm sorry, Mr. Burt?
Just to mention that Jim Butler was not able to make it from the.
From COG?
Yes.
Okay, if you could just introduce yourselves, please, so that the public knows who you are.
I'm Nancy Kouser, I'm the Executive Director of Sector.
Thank you.
Nick Keppel, Regional Judge of Public.
Michael Carroll, General Manager, Southeast Area Transit District.
Thank you very much. So Mr. Butler is not here. Did you want to speak to anything about that line item, Mr. Burt, are we good?
It's a flat budget. You know, our transportation grants and planning go through there. It's something we need to be a part of. And if anything, the state's going more towards regionalization, so I fully endorse that amount.
Thank you. Counselor Atwater moved the $134,239, it was seconded by Counselor Schmidt.
I missed it, I missed it, Schmidt.
Did you get the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the COG line item. So the next line item is sector. So Ms. Kouser, would you like to address that at all?
Certainly, again, that's a flat-funded line item. It's been flat since 2007. Sorry, not close enough. Usually, no one complains about me being too quiet. I think our partnership with Groton is stronger than ever. There's really little that we work on that doesn't involve Groton. Right now, we're working on a major event for Electric Boat. That is an event that will allow suppliers to get in front of buyers for General Dynamics for all divisions in the Northeast. We've purposely placed that event in Groton at the Marriott. And part of our efforts are to ensure that we are highlighting this region for those companies that might move to our area to be contractors or to help the supply chain. We've also toured major developers through Groton. Just last week, we found a space for a bio-CT scientist that was looking to move and we found that in Groton. We're very honored to have Mr. Burt on our Board of Directors. So I think of all the municipalities that we work with, Groton is probably the most important to us, partly because we rent here. You know, we pay $36,000 a year to rent right on Fame Street. So I think, I appreciate the support, it's very important to us. This money matches a federal grant that we receive that helps us to do economic development in the region. As Mr. Burt said, regionalization is more and more important. And I feel that the relationship is very helpful. I think we're trying very hard not to step on any toes, but we're trying to enhance the region. We've just signed on to be the major sponsor for a New England Real Estate Journal Developer Symposium that will be happening in the region in October. And we'll be working with the town closely to make sure that your properties are highlighted.
Very good, thank you. And Mr. Carroll, correct?
Good morning and thank you again for allowing us to be here. And thank you for your ongoing support of Southeast Area Transit District, which is, of course, a regional transit agency composed of nine-member towns, of which Groton is a very important member. You have two representatives serving on the Seat Board of Directors. And our budget request is a 2.5% increase, a modest increase over last year. That basically leverages over a million dollars in transit. That basically leverages over a million dollars in transit services in the town of Groton, represented by routes eleven, one oh eight, uh, two and three, uh, serving the town of Groton. We provide probably about, uh, over a hundred thousand passenger trips on our fixed route service in Groton every year. The budget really is a status quo budget, a maintenance budget. Our budget is very heavily dependent upon state funding, which is over seventy percent of our operating funds. And on our capital side for new buses, and you may have noticed, we've acquired some new, new rolling stock in the last year. That's funded with eighty percent federal money and twenty percent state money, requiring no contribution from the member towns. So we think it's a pretty good deal out there for, for the member towns to support public transit. So as I said, it's, it's a maintenance budget. We would like to grow the service, but that's very heavily dependent upon state funding. Uh, we always would like to, uh, we are looking at ways of improving the service. Uh, we're working closely with the Council of Governments on the JALIS study to see what the impact of the Electric Boat and, and Navy Base Expansion will be and its impact on, on services. And we're always interested in working with new partners, particularly with Electric Boat, if there's something we can do there, uh, to support the expansion of EB. Uh, and we're also dipping our toe in what's called the micro-transit model over in Stonington, which is, if you will, Uber for public transit operators, uh, looking at possibly replacing that fixed route service, the Route Ten service in Stonington, with, with a, a, a real-time demand response service. Uh, that's a very preliminary thing. We're just starting, we're dipping our big toe in, as I said, we'll see where that shakes out over the coming year. So those are some of the things we're doing at Seat and clearly, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have and look forward to your continued support of public transit in the region. Thank you.
Thank you. And Judge Keppel.
Morning.
Good morning.
Believe we have another, also a flat-budget request, which has been the same, I believe, since two thousand and eleven. Want to thank the town for hosting the Regional Court at the Town Hall. We thoroughly enjoy our, our excellent working relationship with the town. Speaking of partnerships, um, anytime we need, um, any little tweak and, um, a minor repair in our several, several offices, um, town staff is always, um, very responsive. One of our functions, um, we have eight hundred files a year that we do in the court, fifty percent of which are decedent estates and a lot of people don't realize that one of our functions is to collect, make sure that the debts of the estates are paid. And oftentimes, one of the debts is taxes to, to the town of Groton or the other four towns, other three towns, uh, served by the region. So we, we perform in that respect an important service for the town of Groton. We, I'm pleased to say that I just met, um, a week and a half ago with the, the Regional Tax and Estate Planning Council, the group with whom, uh, the court and the, and the six libraries in the four towns that I serve, did the, uh, series demystifying probate and estate planning, uh, several, four or five years ago now. That we're gonna resurrect that series, uh, which was, um, very popular. We did twenty-four sessions at the, at the six, at the, uh, six libraries, three of which are in the town of Groton, Bill, Groton Public and Mystic Noank. We figure we marshaled about a hundred thousand dollars' worth of, uh, expertise across those twenty-four sessions, um, on behalf of, uh, the residents of the four towns, so, um, and, uh, we had great turnout. People, uh, really, I think, appreciated, um, the informational session. Also, um, want to give a shout out to, uh, and say how much I enjoy working with the Youth Services Board, uh, a remarkable group, um, based at the Human Services Department. Uh, I'm always impressed with, um, the synergy and the share, information sharing that goes on, um, at that, you know, they're doing remarkable work and, um, quietly and a lot of people, because they, they serve youth, it's, it tends to be not a lot of splash about it, but, um, I thoroughly enjoy and am impressed with the work that they're doing. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So do any of the councillors have questions for any of our three guests? Councillor Atwater.
It's not a question, it's a comment. Um, I attended the Seat Board meeting a couple of weeks ago and I'll have to say, I didn't know whether it was public or not, so I didn't say anything, but this micro-transit system sounds terrific. I mean, it really is exciting. And I guess I'd just comment also, I noticed that your budget was a hundred and thirty-two thou, this is the total group, a hundred and thirty-two thousand and thirty-four dollars for last year, of which a hundred and thirty-two thousand, thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents was spent. So I appreciate the seventy-five cents being added back to our general fund.
Um, on that note, I, I forgot to mention, this councillor, Bum Gardner, is gonna be resigning his position on the Seat Board. And when we receive the written resignation, then councillor Atwater will be appointed by the council to serve. So if you see councillor Atwater there, um, welcome him, please.
Welcome to the Seat Board.
Councillor Bum Gardner.
So we'll, I'll start with Seat. So, um, on that same wavelength, um, you know, it's been a privilege serving on the board and really learning about the great work you're doing, not just in, uh, Groton, but also regionally. Could you talk about, again, some of the changes that, you know, you, you have in mind for the existing lines and how maybe in the future, um, you know, we could improve, uh, the, uh, bus service here, here in town?
Well, as, as you may recall, we did, uh, a major service study several years ago, which did talk about making realignments, but the assumption on that service study was that essentially, uh, level, level funding or perhaps a modest, uh, increase. Unfortunately, with the state funding picture, uh, that's not been the case. We're struggling just to maintain status quo with state funding. We, last year, looked at a, possibly a fifteen percent whack to the state funding. So we were scrambling, looking at, considering major service reductions in response to that. And thankfully, the General Senate at the last minute approved the, uh, new car tax, uh, using it to fund the Special Transportation Fund. So we avoided the major service cuts. So we, we're always looking to make service improvements and as I mentioned earlier, we still would like to look at implementing some of those service modifications, uh, that were recommended in that service study. But now we need to layer on additional information from the JALIS study, the impacts of EB and all, and, and the sub-base expansion on our communities, particularly here in Groton and down in this area that we serve. So we're gonna have to wait and see how that shakes out. We're working with the consultants on that and see where we go.
I know you and I have had many discussions about bus shelters. And I was wondering in, uh, what role you think the town could play in, um, potentially, uh, I don't wanna say supplement some of that funding, but, um, you know, where, where it could be appropriate if, if there's one that, um, is in neglect or in poor condition.
Right. Uh, one of the, Seat's never really been involved in, in the bus shelter business and it's kind of been the redheaded stepchild among our district, so to speak. Individual towns have sort of, uh, managed the, uh, the bus shelters in various ways. So the board tasked me with coming up with a bus shelter program and I'm working on that. The, the news is, the good news is that we can usually find capital funds to acquire and install bus shelters. The challenge is they need to be maintained once, once they're installed. And that, that's a challenge for Seat, a tight operating budget. So my initial recommendation to the board was perhaps the towns, uh, once we install shelters, could assume the responsibility in some form or fashion for the routine maintenance and upkeep of shelters. So, we'd like to identify those places. We know particularly Groton, the shelters are getting long in the tooth, they're in pretty rough shape in most cases. I've talked with the town manager about replacing a couple of those, we're willing to do that. I think with the spring weather, we can get on that. But I'd like to go back and revisit how we're going to maintain them going forward. So, uh, we, we look at the ridership counts to see if, uh, the locations are warranted. Frankly, anecdotally, with the information I have now, all the shelter locations in Groton, I'm not sure I would recommend replacements, maybe just removal of a couple, but certainly some of them do need to be replaced, so we're gonna be working on those going forward. If we can develop partnerships with, with community, with local businesses, et cetera, be glad to do that. Another option is to look at perhaps an advertising contract where an advertise, you, you allow advertisement on the shelters and the advertiser assumes responsibility for the maintenance and upkeep. So we're looking at ways of doing that.
Well, to the extent I can be helpful identifying those partnerships, um, you know, with, with David, certainly love to do so from afar. If I can move on quickly to, to Nancy, um, uh, it's great to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
Now, I, I know, um, you've played a role in, um, in TRIP in the last few years and, um, you've, um, in addition to obviously working with John on your board, you've had a lot of experience working with our economic development team here. Um, so maybe if you could kind of illuminate or shine a light on, on your work with, um, uh, you know, with Paige on and, um, and certainly the, uh, the rest of the team on, you know, the, uh, Supply Chain Consortium and, um, Community Concierge and some of those other projects that, um, will, uh, benefit the town in the long run.
Absolutely. So, um, uh, I have been on, um, either the Board of Advisors or the Board of Advisors, depending on the structure of, of TRIP. It's changed several times over the years. I have just served on the Search Committee for a new Executive Director. We work very closely with the Naval and Maritime Consortium. In fact, they've just asked us to become their bookkeeper, um, which we are gonna be doing going forward. Um, we also have been on various advisory committees for some of the projects. Community Concierge is gonna be wrapped into the Supplier Event that we're doing in May because we want to make sure that anyone who comes to visit us has a really good sense of the region and how they could potentially move here. Um, so Thames River Innovation Place has been a large chunk of our time for, for quite a while. Um, in addition, I sit on the Board of the Thames River Heritage Park and recently completed their business plan for them as part of that work, um, to get that moving forward. With Paige and also with Mr. Mellon, we've been working on a project with Electric Boat to bring all the, um, region and municipal leaders together so that EB only has to tell their story and their needs once. Instead of, you know, thirty-seven people going out to them and saying, "What do you need?", we're working together, um, to capture what they might need. The leadership of that project has just been turned over to Sector, though I consider it a partnership with Groton because Paige and Craig have been instrumental in that. Um, and the goal is to, um, help them figure out what their employers, employees need in terms of housing and transportation in partnership with some of the studies that the COG is doing and in partnership with Seat and others, um, to kind of pull the pieces together. That's really our, our, our main role, is to pull pieces together. Um, an example of that is EB indicated at one of the meetings that one of their challenges is that their new employees coming in want to experience the shoreline but don't know how to. Um, so the next day, I called NES, uh, New England Sailing and Science Center, and this summer, they'll be doing a sailing program, uh, for their employees. And what was unanticipated is in return, EB is going to be providing mentors for some of the at-risk youth they work with. Um, we also provided testimony, um, for Senator Farmica to speak to the Education Committee about the importance of schools being, um, as highly recognized for preparing students for immediate entry into the workforce as they are for immediate college admittance. Both very important, but they really only get recognized for one. Um, so some, just, just some of the examples. And then touring developers through, um, we've been showing them the property behind the Marriott, for example. Um, they, we're working with Dr. Burrows on the farm property, um, that he's interested in developing. Um, we have been working with Thera Mahan on trying to get some, um, uh, money or help out of DECD and also potential financing. And we just did financing for Beard Brewing, um, and Mystic Cheese up in the industrial park. And the importance of our, of our lending program is twofold. One, we work with, uh, companies that are not quite bank-ready. They need a lot of flexibility, um, so they may not be able to start paying when they promised. So we allow that, 'cause we want them to be successful. And we're continuously working, not only on getting paid, but on giving them the business planning support to be successful. We have also recently learned from the new Commissioner of the ECD that the state is absolutely not going to be renewing their Small Business Express Program, uh, which was a huge source of financing for small businesses. Um, so we, this past year, have been using our own funding, uh, to support businesses. We have about six million dollars, um, in lending money that's available. Um, so, um, those are just some of the examples. Um, you know, we, um, have about a million dollars of our own money out in loans, uh, to Groton businesses. Um, a billion, about a million dollars of SBEP money that we manage for the state. Um, and then our Procurement Technical Assistance Center, which helps businesses become government contractors, worked with about seventeen Groton businesses last year and they received about seven hundred thousand dollars in government contracts. Obviously, we're always looking to increase that. Um, we're working very hard with Electric Boat to help them achieve their promise to the state of doubling the supply chain spend in Connecticut.
Thank you.
Well, I think if those are just a few of the, uh, just some of the examples, I think we have a very positive, uh, financial outlook in, in Groton and the entire region.
Thank you.
I'd like to get to you, Judge Keppel, but, um, nonetheless, I know we have quite a few people who want to ask questions, so, um, I'll defer to, I believe, my fellow, uh, councillor.
Councillor Heath and then Councillor Schmidt, please.
Actually, was going to inquire about the same, uh, to find out what we're getting, you know, is, is the membership valuable? Is it at the right level and all that kind of stuff? So, it sounds like you answered it.
Councillor Schmidt.
I do want to thank Sector, in addition to all the things that you're doing. You have provided temporary office space for the Tourism District, Eastern Connecticut Tourism District, so they can remain somewhat viable in the Eastern Connecticut and, uh, we do truly appreciate that.
Thank you. And we've committed to do so through at least June, uh, while they figure out what their next move is. So thank you for that, it's been our pleasure.
I had questions about Seat, please. My concern is that Groton's investment in Seat, um, have a service match back to us where we're meeting the needs of the people who actually need to use the mass transit system. And I know in years past, there had been recommendations to, I can't remember the word, that was used, straighten or smooth the lines and it would have resulted in, um, service not, in my opinion, not reaching the people who most needed the service. So, um, I will be asking again, what, what is it looking like for our Groton people who actually use Seat to transit to and from work, appointments, groceries, et cetera? And coupled with that, will the Coles Plaza still be a hub where, um, Groton residents can go from, say, Bus Eleven, which serves Branford area, um, to Coles? And then from there, they can get their buses to Norwich, et cetera?
Right. Yeah, I, one of the, one of the focuses of the original Nelson-Nygardt study, you were right, is, is to try to straighten out the routes. Uh, one of the complaints we heard is the routes tend to meander. Uh, so there's always a trade-off in, in trying to make a route direct versus trying to serve various communities. And, and I'm certainly mindful of, of the comments and concerns that we maybe go too far in, in one direction of trying to straighten out the routes. So we've not implemented those, those recommendations from the Nelson-Nygardt study at this point. Uh, they were pretty radical for this part, for both Groton and, uh, the New London service. They essentially, uh, took the routes and combined them into essentially two big routes, uh, that went from Groton then over to New London and continued on into Waterford in one case and then also from Groton to New London and down to Ocean Beach. Uh, and there was some straightening. And as I said, we've not done that. Uh, I think before we would do that, we would need to come back and revisit whether that's the appropriate thing to do to serve, serve our, our customers. That's ultimately what we, what we're about. And as I said, too, we also need to layer on additional information from this JALIS study and the impacts of EB and trying to see how we can provide support for the expansion of EB and make sure we can address the transportation, parking and, and, uh, residency issues that are gonna come with the expansion of Electric Boat. So we'll certainly, so we're closely with the member town. We serve at, at your behest, we're your transit agency, so if you're not happy with what we're doing, we're not doing, I'm not doing my job. So, by all means, if, if you have concerns or whatever about what we're doing, please let me know. Work with your board member or work with me directly, we'd be delighted to try to address this.
So we will get our concerns to councillor Atwater, he will bring them to you then. Thank you. Councillor Heath.
Just real quick, I'll take an opposite position than the mayor. Apologize. Having used buses extensively when I lived in Boston and Washington DC, the meandering routes, you know, if you add thirty, forty, fifty minutes to a route route, I'm, I'm just throwing numbers out there again, it led me to, uh, stop using the bus. Uh, so if you can straighten it out without necessarily harming the, you know, I'm, I'm happy to walk an extra, uh, block to get to a bus if it's gonna be ten minutes faster, so.
I think councillor Parker has something she would like to add.
As, uh, growing, when I moved out to Virginia, being a single parent, the bus system was my route. Tried to carry a one-year-old or a baby to get to the bus stop that's maybe a block or two away is not good. So, I wouldn't change it to make it straightened out. It's working for the people who live in the area. So to, in order to do that, I, I wouldn't even touch it, if possible, 'cause there'd be so many complaints. They would have to walk down a mile, if not more, and if they had to take their. And if they had to take their kids down Thomas Road to go catch a bus on Paquannick Road, it wouldn't work.
We don't need to get into this. I just wanted to make sure that you knew there was an alternative.
As is indicated, it's always a challenge and it is a trade-off between directness and then direct service to our customer base. So, we're very mindful of that. There are trade-offs.
Well, we'll make sure you're mindful of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for any of the three guests? Counselor Baumgartner's already spoken. Anybody who's not spoken want to speak first? Go ahead.
All right. Judge Keppel, so how long has the court, court been at the Town Hall?
The Groton Court was there from, you know, Ott 6, you know, for, the courts, I think, as long as it's been at Town Hall, back into the, you know, 17th, 18th century. So, basically, we had a Groton, longstanding Groton, each town had their own probate court. In 2010, what, the, we, the region, the four towns voted on a regional judge, and Groton was selected as the host site for the regional court. So, it's been since January of 2011 that we've served as a regional court based at the Groton Town Hall.
And in that arrangement, does the probate court almost pay rent to the?
Yes.
To the town? I think we provide the space. Is that right, Cindy?
We provide space, and then the other host towns, we bill them a share of it, a pro-rated share of it.
Yeah, under the statute, towns that are served by probate courts, both when they were individual towns and now when they're regional, are obliged to provide some of the underlying costs to operate the courts. The core cost for staff and comes from a combination of state funding, 20%, 24% state funding, and then the rest is from fees.
Now, when you compound staffing, the space you need for archives, and is that a sufficient space for you?
It isn't, actually. But it was, because of the location was best, and I'm pleased to say that in the seven-plus years I've been there, seven and a half years, we've had virtually no complaints. You know, people from Ledger just come down on 117. People in Stonington are having shared, sharing downtown Mystic, they're used to coming into Groton. So, I've actually been pleasantly surprised there hasn't been more pushback about the fact that people have to travel to the court. But no, it's, the space is wonderful, and I love being there, but it is, it is very tight. We, I've mentioned in previous presentations, we serve 80,000 people, and the Berlin Court, which serves 5,000 more people than we do, has 5,000 square feet, and we have probably 1,200, 1,500 square feet. So, you know, and the result of that is, I have to bother the town manager, thankfully, on a, not a weekly basis, but when we have a large gathering, we have to go upstairs to accommodate, because my conference room, the room that serves as my office and my hearing room, which, when you go to Saybrook, you know, the judge has his office, and then there's judge's chambers that are across the hall in a real hearing room. We're in the, what used to be where the registers are. But not complaining, it's just that it is tight. And maybe someday down the road, when, with the reconfiguration of buildings, there may be a site that, because part of the problem is, people that use the court end up milling about in the hallway, and, you know, on occasion, there may be an animated discussion, or, you know, we will sometimes get 10, 12 people, and it gets loud for both the clerk staff and the people that are using the clerk's offices. But, you know, it's an eminently tolerable situation, but it isn't really enough space, basically. And my clerks are jammed together, three of them, so when someone comes in, it's, we have the coffee going, it's very, it's tight. But we love it regardless. So, someday, someday we'll have, we'll have more, you know, more adequate, but everybody, you know, we're all, we're all dealing with tightness, spatially and financially.
Thank you, Judge Keppel. Counselor Schmidt?
I just wanted to thank Judge Keppel for all that you've done to demystify probate court. It is a time of anguish and confusion, and I think that anything that you can do to help people through the process is critical. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I did, if I may, take two seconds, unrelated to probate, but talking about partnerships and we hear is regional agencies, most of which are nonprofits. I just wanted to share, you know, I'm always extolling all the great things that Groton does, which can and should be exported to other communities. Just want to share an initiative that Groton may consider. From my hometown of Stonington, I recently ended a time of service on the Stonington Free Library as president of the Stonington Free Library Board. The library resurrected a group that had been in existence, a fledgling group, eight or 10 years ago, called the Nonprofit Roundtable. And in the last two years, they've, it's basically a group that, a group of nonprofits that meets monthly, and the library serves as the secretariat of the group. And, you know, in Stonington alone, there's 20-plus nonprofits, and it's ended up being a wonderful coalition of information sharing, because a lot of, you know, we have the Seat Board and the Aquarium, but there's also the Merrill House and the Stonington Ambulance. And by gathering monthly, people have been able to share information about everything, from websites to accounting, and it's been a wonderful success. So, folks in Groton, I'm sure you have an equal or larger number of nonprofits, it may be something to consider.
Thank you.
Always love sharing.
Thank you for the idea. Are there any further questions for any of the guests? Seeing none, we are on account 1007, and we will vote on $134,239. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So, moved unanimously. We are at the end of the accounts for today. We are not adjourning those, so when someone chooses to make a motion, we need to recess to time definite.
I'll make a motion to recess until Monday, April 1st, at 6:00 p.m.
Second. Moved by Heath and seconded by Parker. All those in favor of recessing until Monday, April 1st, at 6:00 p.m., say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? We are in recess. Thank you very much.